7:03, we'll call the meeting to order. All members are present with the exception of Mr. McCoy, who will be along momentarily, just called ahead running a couple of minutes late. And we'll begin with the transmitting of Treasury warrants 2028, 21, and 21A. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Made and seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous? Move on to the approval of the minutes of September 28, 2009, and November 9, 2009. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Have a motion to approve the minutes. It's been seconded, all in favor. Unanimous. Our first appointment this evening is with firefighter Brian Anderson, and it's regarding Wilmington Firefighters Toys for Wilmington Children Program. Mr. Anderson, how are you? Thank you for coming in. We know this is an annual event for you. Maybe you can tell us a little bit more. And for those folks who might be watching, tell us a little bit more.
Yeah, the program we've run probably the last 20 years, I've been in charge of the last 12. What we do is we collect the toys through the town. Wilmington Public Safety Building has a box, the high school, Rocko's Restaurant. And what all the toys that are donated through the Wilmington Firefighters Toys Program stay in the town of Wilmington, get distributed all to the children in Wilmington that are in need. Last year, we did approximately 47 families and over 115 kids that we supplied for. This year, there's probably going to be a greater need for the economy and stuff like that, so hopefully the townspeople will come through and bring the toys to the schools or the station, which is fine. We have, you know, we have a couple of companies that come forward with a large donation of money, which help out. We do go out and purchase toys if we don't get enough in. People also donate, you know, a building each year is donated through one of the companies in town that they give it to us, so we can use it as our store, and that's how we distribute all the toys through there. And it's been a good program the last 12 years. Like I said, 12 years I've been in charge, it's been great. Everything goes good, and so far, we've had no problems at all.
Great. If folks either aren't sure, don't remember where to go, who can they call, or it's a telephone number, a website, or where should they?
Actually, the best is the Wilmington Public Safety Building. It's, you know, you can call 3346 or 978-658-7988, extension 360. And it'll go right to the guys upstairs and whoever you talk to, they all know the program, they all help out in it, and they'll be happy to, if the donations have to be picked up somewhere, we'll go to a company and pick them up at a company. If they have their party, we'll go to the company in town, pick them up, bring them back to what we call our store, and sort them all out, and then start distributing to the children in need.
Great. Appreciate the information. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, can you just let the families know in town how to get ahold of you, or how do you get the names for the families that need?
Well, that's all confidential. Unfortunately, we can't, they, it goes through most school system that they get names by, like you said, all that is just, I really can't talk about that part of it.
Right, but I mean, if a family is looking for help...
If they need, then they can call the fire station. Yes.
Anything else from the board? Just again, thank you for taking the time to, you know, to put out the program and to, you know, manage that, and we appreciate the time and for coming in tonight to let people know.
Thank you. Enjoy the one. Thank you.
My next appointment is with Charles Di Stefano, President, Kevin Kyra, Chairman of the Board, and Jerry Pupa, Member of the Board of Directors, Wilmington Sons of Italy, and George Hooper, Public Building Superintendent, regarding a donation of the town of Wilmington for the reconstruction of the gazebo at the Town Common. And gentlemen, if you would, take a seat at the front table. And as you do, I'd just point out to folks that the Sons of Italy, it's become an annual event, a tradition, that the Sons of Italy makes a donation to the town. I know, Mike, you might have some more details on how this particular project was selected, and we'll go to these gentlemen to let us know more.
As you indicated, Mr. Chairman, for years now, more than I can remember, the Wilmington Sons of Italy has reached out to the town to offer a generous donation for the betterment of the community. And they've done this in a number of different ways, through the donation of public safety vehicles, donation of a vehicle for the senior citizens, a van, they've donated to the school department on so many different occasions, whether it be uniforms for band members or a new school board. I know they've brought in donations for fire equipment, for example. And more recently, they have donated money to help build playgrounds in the town of Wilmington, the most recent of which was the $60,000 donation that we received for the construction of the Woburn Street School Playground. So when the Sons of Italy reached out again this year and said they wanted to do something, we knew that one of the projects that hadn't been funded, that we were really looking to do something with, was the renovation of the gazebo at Town Common, which is a focal point for the community. And in talking to the Superintendent of Public Buildings, Judge Hooper, about a particular project, he thought that was a very worthy project. And with your permission, I'd like to ask Judge if he could maybe explain what the donation is going to be, and then maybe the Sons of Italy can make their presentation and offer a few words.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yeah, after the last Fourth of July festivities, it was evident that we needed some reconstruction of the gazebo in the common. Originally built with the class of 1977 as a project from the high school students and help from the DPW, it was time. And what we're doing with the generosity of the Sons of Italy is we've done a lot of work in it by replacing roof rafters that were rotted out, you know, they, just over the time, they've seen the better years. We've replaced decking on the roof, we've stripped it off completely of all the red cedar shingles that were the original. We put in a ice shield, covered the entire roof to make it watertight, and then we put a breathable vapor barrier underneath and put new red cedar shingles, like the existing ones that were there. So it kind of looks like the original look. We've put an aluminum drip edge all the way around, and this time, we've used a composite fascia board, which is, you know, made out of, it's man-made product, so it's not going to rot out over, and it's going to stand the test of time. That's the first phase of it. I don't know if any of you have seen it. When you go by, it looks, it looks pretty nice. There are still more phases to be done. We want to paint it. We want to do repointing of the bricks around it. So the first initial phase has been completed, which we wanted to get done before the tree lighting. The remainder of it, replanting new bushes, doing the brickwork, like I had stated, and painting some of the wrought iron, might not be done until springtime, but this initial phase is just about completed. And they were very helpful in getting this process together.
Mr. Chairman, what the town manager explained to you is, one of the principles of the Sons of Italy is to support the local community, and like he had mentioned, over the years, we have supported both the town in buying vehicles and also community activities. And it's with great pleasure that, with the support of all the brothers and sisters of our lodge, that we make this donation tonight for $15,000 to go towards the renovation of the gazebo.
Anything else that either your gentleman want to add?
No, we, we've been, this has been an ongoing process for years. The firemen that was here, we did those, what are those, Mike, those?
Terminal between cameras.
We did those. We've done, we've done something for, I think, every department. Besides this, we're going to be, the high school is having the wrestling tournament. Usually, we was doing half of it. This year, we're going to be doing the whole, paying the whole bill for the wrestling tournament.
Excellent.
But I'd love to talk, Mike, but my voice is not well. But we've been in the town since 1967, helping the community, working with the youth and the elderly, and our commitment is firm and strong, and we'll continue to do it as long as we're around, and we intend to be here for a long time.
Any questions or comments from the board?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just say once again that the Sons of Italy is a fine organization. As Jerry stated, you know, they've donated many things to the town of Wilmington, being on the board for some period of time, that they've done an outstanding commitment. And I know while times are tough, it's really nice to see that organization step up to the plate and do what they can. And it's unexpected right now because of these tough times, but during these times, it's really appreciative. And it's a great organization, and the class of 77 is perhaps one of the better classes down at the high school. All right? So, not that I graduated there from 77, but, you know. But once again, we want to thank you. You've done an outstanding job, and your organization, once again, is an outstanding organization. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo that. We're fortunate to have such an active lodge in our community, and a lot of other communities that have Sons of Italy, maybe not as active as this lodge has been for over so many years, and I also appreciate all the work you guys do.
I'd like just to add to it that through the years, you've done a great asset to the town. All the donations you've done, like you said, through all the departments, you've always donated something that was real worthy and need, that we're, the town really need in the citizens, and I guess it's a great organization in all the years. Again, thank you.
I'll expand and say that as one of the few non-Italians on this board, I fully compliment and applaud your efforts, and I thank you very much for what you're doing for the town of Wilmington at a time when it's hard for town government to pull additional resources out of its residents. You're enabling the town to do great things, and I ask you just keep it up, stay around, and keep on doing it. We very much appreciate it.
One thing that I'd like to bring up, too, is we do have a junior lodge, and Lou, you'd be glad to hear about this, they have adopted a platoon, and they send, I guess, the first thing they do at the start of a meeting is to send a greeting letter to the soldiers over in Afghanistan. And their, last Christmas, they prepared packages, and I think they're going to do the same this year, too.
I think it's all been said, but again, thank you on behalf of the town.
How old do the kids have to be to join the junior lodge?
Ten to 18. Principal Assessor. It's regarding a public hearing for the discussion of local property tax policy with reference to classification. Good evening, Skip.
It seems like every year when I do this, I always follow some uplifting presentation.
You don't think that's a mistake, do you?
In fact, by reality-based approach here. The Board of Assessors has completed its fiscal 2010 revaluation effort, and I'm here this evening to present to you our findings and make some recommendations for tax rates for fiscal year 2010. You'll note that fiscal year 2009, the residential value stood at $2,787 million, and this year, it's down to $2,604 million. It's a decrease of about $183 million, two, I'm sorry, $2,604 million, down about $183 million from last year. This was intentional on our part. We analyzed the sales of property that occurred that would represent the fair market values in 2010, and we decreased the residential values by about 6% across the board. If you recall, last year, fiscal year 2009, we performed the same analysis and came up with a similar conclusion. So over the past two years, residential property values have dropped about 12%. One thing that we haven't seen, at least since the early 90s, is a beginning of the erosion of value in the commercial, industrial, and personal property sector. That's something new. If you're looking fiscal year 2009, the commercial value stood at 142 million, it's down to about 139 million now, a drop-off of about 3 million, representing about a 4% decrease in the commercial sector. The industrial sector last year, 693 million, or six, closer to 694 million, down to 675 million now, again, a drop-off of almost 19 million, or about a 3% decline. And in the personal property sector, we've seen a slight drop-off, about 4%, from 81 million, down to about 78 million. Overall, the value decline in the town of Wilmington from fiscal year 2009 to fiscal year 2010 is about a 5.5% value drop, about $207,974,700. To put this in perspective, the values in 2010 looked very similar to the values in 2006. So it's 2006 all over again. How this plays out on a levy, if you'll note that in fiscal year 2009, the residential sector assumed 57% of the tax levy burden. In 2010, the residential sector, because of a decline in property values, is assuming 55%. The commercial, industrial, and personal property classes is assuming the attendant remainder, respectively, in '09, it was 43%, and 2010, it's 45%. You'll also note that in this year, the levy itself is increasing by about $2.1 million. And as we analyze, first of all, the tax levy share, you'll see that, as we just indicated, in 2010, the residential sector now is bearing 55% of the tax levy burden. Commercial and industrial is assuming 45% of that burden, and the shift is the maximum shift allowable under law, the 1.75. If I refer you, for example, down to fiscal year '01, you can see that the residential share was 52% at that time, and increased at a pretty rapid pace up into fiscal year '08, where it was 60% of the levy share. And likewise, in '01, the commercial, industrial, and personal property sector represented 48%, and they saw their burden decrease over time to a low in '08 of 40%. And this was even with, if you recall, in 2004, we passed that, what do you call it, chapter three of the Acts of 2004, which allowed us to increase even more of the tax burden onto the CIP class, even with that, their share continued to go down. What we're seeing in '09 with the decline in residential property values is that we're starting to see the pendulum swing again back, where the CIP is going to be assuming a greater share of the burden of taxes, and the residential group will bear a little bit less of that burden. And then how this plays out with the tax rate itself, this is the fiscal year 2010 tax rate computation. The tax levy, and this is the maximum levy limit, is $54,296,612. Our town value today stands at $3,497,381,90. If we divide the maximum levy limit by the town value, we come up with an overall rate, a single rate, a uniform rate of $15.52 per thousand. Wilmington is a classified community, and by that, I mean that we tax commercial, industrial, and personal property at a higher rate than residential. So we take the 15.52 and multiply it by our maximum shift amount, which is a 1.75 factor, and we come up with a commercial, industrial, and personal property tax rate of $27.17. If we take the reciprocal of the 1.75, which is the minimum residential factor of .742707, times the straight rate, the single rate, we come up with our new residential tax rate of $11.53 per thousand. So overall, this will result in an average residential tax increase of about $62, or So that's the tale of the tape thus far, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions or comments from the board?
Just go over that one more time, Gary.
No, I'm kidding. No, in all seriousness, there's a lot of stuff there. And I'm going to ask you to just define some terms for me, in the hopes that in doing so for me, you do so for those that are watching. When you refer to the word "shift," a tax shift of 1.75, can you help expand on that terminology a little bit for me, please?
Yes. In the late 70s, all right, every community in Massachusetts had a single tax rate. If we were in the 70s right now, okay, we'd go no further than that. The tax computation was very simple. How much money do you need to run the town? How much is the town worth? Divide the worth of the town into how much money is needed to run it. That's your overall rate. It was that simple, right? In the late 70s and early 80s, two things, two legislative initiatives occurred, Prop 2 and 1/2 and Full Fair Cash Value. And what these did was, they changed the scenario in a lot of communities as to how they taxed property. Essentially, the Full Fair Cash Value said you have to tax all property at its full cash value. Prior to that, residential was taxed one way, commercial and industrial another way. So when the legislature looked at implementing this tax scheme, it realized that it was going to result in a huge windfall to the commercial, industrial classes, and a huge tax increase to the residential sector. So they essentially took a method that had been in place for years and codified it. They made it law. And they said that a community, if it so chooses, can set a different tax rate, a higher tax rate, for commercial, industrial, and personal property than residential property.
Okay.
If I, a follow-up, that 15, I don't know if it's on the, I think, is it on this slide?
1552.
1552.
Yep.
Just for grins, if we were to assume that we weren't in the mixed classification scenario that we're in now.
Yes.
If we were to go back to the old days, can you estimate for us what the average tax bill would be for residential? I'm just out of curiosity.
If we didn't do this, the average tax bill, this year, for example, we're talking about an average tax increase of $62, it would be closer to $1,500.
Increase.
Increase.
Okay.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, it has a significant amount. The communities that are classified communities are usually communities that have a larger base of commercial and industrial property. We have a, we have a base in Wilmington of commercial and industrial property in excess of 13 million square feet. You know, Wilmington is a commercial and industrial powerhouse.
Yeah, I'm good.
I just got one quick comment. Now, you're saying the modest increase of $62, which is, when you take into consideration last year, we had a decrease of $48. So over the past two years, we've basically had an increase of $14.
That's a good point.
Yes. Yeah, so that's to oversimplify, I think, but it's, and as we had mentioned about the economy and getting donations, and that's not a bad, bad number, but...
I think we're in a lot better shape than most communities. And, you know, I want to just go back to one, one thing. When we talk about the value, you know, I like to talk about Wilmington as being a tale of many towns, right? In the past year, well, last year, for example, we had the highest growth figure that we've ever had, okay, because we had so much new development occurring. This year, we had another high-growth figure, okay? We have to contend with a shaky economy. You know, we are reducing the residential property values, which is only proper. I mean, you know, residential property values have taken somewhat of a hit. We've responded to that over the past couple of years in a measured approach by dropping the values a total of 12%. We're starting to see a little bit of commercial and industrial erosion, which is a concern, all right? But at the same time, and this commercial and industrial erosion is happening more in the industrial park-type properties. At the same time that this is occurring, you know, anyone that drives around town can see that we're seeing a boom in the retail sector. So one of the things that we've been fortunate in Wilmington with is that we've got a variety of property stock, and that it's not impacted by the economy the same way at the same time.
Right, so when you have your office, you know, research and development-type property values decrease, your retail might be increasing or holding, holding its value and vice versa.
Exactly.
I know everybody's always talking about trying to diversify not only housing, but our commercial tax base as well, so it works.
It does work.
Skip, when these commercial buildings are not occupied, is their tax rate still continuing on, or is there an abatement that actually they're giving?
All commercial and industrial property is valued by the sales approach, what somebody will pay for it, and also by the income approach. In other words, it's different from a house in that its value lies in its ability to generate income. If the building is vacant, that has a significant impact on the value of the property. So, you know, as we see more and more vacancies, and we're starting to see some creeping vacancies out there, I anticipate that we're going to see more abatement applications.
So they're actually, so their tax will actually be paying less at that time, correct, to the town? So we're actually losing a little revenue on that?
Potentially.
Yeah.
Potentially.
Only because the same thing, I'm seeing, starting to see more and more of the bigger, you know, construction part, you know, the commercial part of it, starting to become more and more vacant. That's why I was a little concerned.
You know, I think I mentioned at the Chamber of Commerce meeting that, you know, I don't want to advance a market. I hate to talk gloom and doom because it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy. But yet and still, I think we have to look realistically at where the town is. You know, the huge crash in the residential market didn't happen. I mean, property values have come down. We've got to deal with a lot of short sales and foreclosures and clear that up, but we don't have a whole excess inventory of residential property in eastern Massachusetts. We've got some properties, problems in the commercial and industrial sector, just with vacancies, and it's partly because the business cycle has slowed, and it's partly a result of the banking crisis that's affecting communities like Wilmington, where these people that need to borrow big sums of money can't get hold of it. So, you know, we're starting to feel that trickle-down effect here. But again, I have to emphasize, at the same time, we're seeing a boom in the retail sector. So it's not all gloom and doom.
I'd like to at least thank the leadership as far as yourself and all the components that work with you, including the management, that, you know, the town is in good shape. I don't think we're, like you said, in other towns, having any layoffs, no, you know, we're actually moving forward, I think. You know, we are putting some new fire apparatus together, the highway department, this year, you know, moving on as far as some of their needs, and I think that's a good sign. So I think, you know, it contributes back to the leadership, the leadership of the government, all the way down to the town hall, to the management. And so I think the taxpayers in the community at least ought to look at the whole nucleus that this town has and actually appreciate it. Now, no one likes to hear taxes going up, especially myself, but like I say, it's for what we have and what we're offering, even in the sports, as we said, I don't think we're charging, you know, fees for the... charging, you know, fees for, for the kids of this town to, you know, go out there and, and all the things that go with it. So I think, again, the appreciation should go down to the, to the Town Hall, the government, and all the people that work for it. Thank you. Skip, one of the things that I think about when you come in every year is the simple message that the town consistently, for as many years back as I can remember, has maximized the classification shift. We have adopted, we've put as much of the tax burden as legally possible on the commercial, industrial, and personally, personal property taxpayers, and I think that's an important message. The other piece that I try and focus on is that the values are what they are. But that's, that's kind of a difficult thing to get your head around sometimes in terms of the timing of the appraisals and this independent contractor goes out and do the appraisals and you're under DOR rules and they have to use the previous calendar year. Can you speak to that a little bit so people understand how evaluation is actually performed?
Yeah, you know, we're, we're always looking at values that are year-old. You know, for example, for fiscal year 2000, 210, we looked at the status of the property January 1st, 2009, which precipitated our looking at sales that occurred in calendar year 2008. So essentially, it's ancient history. And, I mean, I can recall in the, you know, the early 2000s, mid 2000s, people would look at the values that we came out with, and their property value had increased by 50 or 100,000, and then they used to say, "These people must be crazy. They don't know what they're doing," because the value was so out of date. Now, people are coming in with bank appraisals that they had done yesterday, all right, that may be lower than our assessed value, and they're saying, "You people must be crazy. You don't know what you're doing because, you know, clearly my property isn't worth that." So it is, it is a timing factor. All of the values that we're coming up with are, for example, 2010, we're looking at calendar year 2008, and that's the statutory requirement for that, all right?
Right. And, so from a layman's standpoint, tell me if I, if I'm on the money with this, from a layman's standpoint, it takes a year or two to catch up to the declining values for your assessed value to match up to the market value. But likewise, on the upswing, it'll take a year to two years for the assessed values to catch up to the market values.
That's exactly right. Sorry.
Anything else?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to make a quick comment pertaining to this. I would imagine that most city councilors and most members of Board of Selectmen would like to say what I would like to say, but they can't. I like what I hear. The town is in decent shape on what we're doing, and the bottom line is, I would hope to say that in the next year or two. Given that, I would hope to think that, as we know, the biggest expense in any corporation is payroll. And as we sit down and negotiate with union, they have to realize the fact that times are tough, people should be fortunate enough they got jobs, and we really need to take a look at that. Being that said, without elaborating on that, the bottom line is, you know, as the commercial values and residential values gone down, the decrease, the town of Wilmington has not really decreased any of its services to its residents. We have not implemented any bus fees, trash fees, or user fees. The town has done a good job under certain leaderships. The town manager has done a good job putting the budget together, and the talent of yourself and your board working with the town manager. But yet, serving on the board for a while, considering myself a conservative member, I got to praise the members of the Board of Selectmen, taking a conservative approach, and that's what we need to do. We have to make sure there's enough money for a rainy day down the road. It's going to happen. And I would hope to think, in a couple of years, things are going to get tough. There's no question about it. I can see that happening. Local aid in most communities are going 10 to 15 percent, local aid, 10 to 15 percent down, but it's going to be years past. You know, and that's going to happen to the town, and we have to really understand that as we move forward. So I think we need to work together collectively and do what we can for the town. And once again, I think the town's in great shape financially at the time, but there are a lot of folks out there losing their homes, a lot of folks out there don't have a job, unemployment, and we have to understand that, you know? So, given that said, not going to put any gloom and doom on anything, but we have to be realist about it. And once again, when we sit down with these unions, we have to, they have to realize that times are tough, and we need to work together. And that's a message that I like to send to the folks out there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anything else from the board? If not, we'll go to the audience. If there's any questions or comments from the audience, seeing none. Mike, is it, is this the time that we customarily take the vote to adopt the classification shift recommended?
It's recommended by the Board of Assessors.
Right. So at that, we would entertain a motion as to whether or not the board will adopt the classification shift of 1.75 as outlined by Mr. Moynihan. So, Will?
I second that motion as directed.
I mean, seconded. Anything further? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you again for, your presentation is clear and very helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll give folks a chance to, to exit and to enter, and our next appointment, scheduled for 7:40, is with Frank and Karen West. And I understand that staff, excuse me, Staff Sergeant Dennis Wyble is also here this evening, and it's regarding a Toys for Tots program. Mr. West?
I'd like to be as brief as possible. Basically, as you know, we've been doing the Toys for Tots program with the Marine Corps for the past 13 years, and we're out there collecting toys again. We have, first of all, I want to thank the town manager for allowing toy boxes here at Town Hall. Many of the schools have the Toys for Tots boxes, as well as many of the businesses around. And, you know, once again, I think the, because of the economy, I think what's going to end up happening is, is that the need is going to be up there and probably the donations will be down, so any support and consideration from the community is certainly appreciated. Currently, what we're doing is that we're having our 13th Annual Photo with Santa Day at our office at 386 Main Street in Wilmington. That'll be held on Sunday, December 6th, from 12 to 4:00. And basically, you know, kids can come in, have pictures taken with Santa Claus, and, you know, they bring a toy and have pictures taken with Santa. We'll have some refreshments and stuff like that. And we're working on several other events and doing some pre-planning for actually a pretty major event for our next, next year, if we can, if we can pull it off, that'll involve several different local groups. But basically, on my end, like I say, I just want to thank, again, thank the town for their support and continued support of the program. I know with Lou, for example, I know with the local heroes, certainly the doors are open if, if you know of any families in particular that, that might need, because I know we've chatted in the past about that, and, you know, thank everyone else for their particular involvement. I'd like to also leave these flyers, if I can just send a couple of these down, and I just leave a couple extras around. As I say, we're working on a few other things that will be in the local newspapers if, if anybody's interested. But I'll turn it off to Staff Sergeant Wyble, who'd like to say a few words as well.
Gentlemen, thank you for the invite. A little bit about the program. Toys for Tots program began back in 1947 by Major Hendricks and a group of reservists in Los Angeles, California, and they collected and distributed 5,000 toys to needy children that year. From 1947 through 1979, Marines collected and distributed new and used toys on reserve drill weekends during October through December, and the reserves refurbished the used toys to hand out to the kids. In Christmas 1980, through the present, Marines have collected and distributed only new toys. For over the past 58 years, the Marine Corps Reserve Toys for Tots program has distributed more than 332.5 million toys to 158.7 million needy children. Its charitable endeavors has made the Marines the unchallenged leaders in looking after needy children at Christmas. Over the 14-year lifespan, the Toys for Tots Foundation has supplemented local toy collections with more than 55.5 million toys valued at more than $284 million. All this information and the register for toys is on our website, which is www.toysfortotsma.org, or by telephone at 978-772-0133. And, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to present a certificate to yourself.
U.S. Marine Corps Reserve Toys for Tots Commander's Award. The United States Marine Corps Reserve is proud to recognize the town of Wilmington for outstanding achievement in supporting the 2009 Toys for Tots program. These generous contributions have enabled us to help fulfill the Christmas dreams of our nation's needy children. Signed, Jack Bergman, Lieutenant General, United States Marine Corps, Commander, Marine Force Reserve.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you. The board. Thank you, Ray.
And sir, we'd also like to thank Mr. Raymond Lepore for all his involvement in the Toys for Tots program. Thank you very much, sir.
It's a pleasure.
Probably, probably in closing, and certainly we're, we're welcome to field any questions or comments, but, you know, like Staff Sergeant said, that, you know, we collect, the Marine Corps Reserve collects a lot of toys, but they also give back every toy that they collect. So certainly, if there's any local families or local charities, anybody that, you know, that anyone can think that might need toys here in the town of Wilmington or in the area, you know, feel free to, you know, either you can contact myself at my house, 978-658-1754. We can put them in touch with the Marines as well, and it's strictly an anonymous program, so if somebody wants to call but doesn't, doesn't want to tell, you know, we don't need to hear the story. I'll put them directly in touch with the Marine Corps, so that this way here, they can hopefully have a little festive Christmas. But, but like I say, is that, you know, we want to get, make sure that the local families, everyone knows that, you know, that there's, you know, there'll be toys out there, and probably in general, just, you know, the generosity of this town for not just the Toys for Tots program, but for all of the, the things that the town does in general, both the civic organizations, the town administration, and just the town, the residents of the town. It sometimes can be very overwhelming, and I think, you know, all of you gentlemen, I think, you know, well know that. And again, I think no matter what, what, what type of charity, if you, if there's anyone that can donate out there, I think it's, it's admirable that people are willing, especially in a tough economy, to, to put out and, and hand out something if they can. So, thank you.
I agree with those comments that you made, Mr. West. I think that volunteerism in this town is the cornerstone of what makes it all work. I have two comments about the, the Toys for Tots program. First of all, again, thank you on behalf of the town for all the work that you do personally and, and that the Marine Corps does more generally. On a lighter note, I know you had mentioned Mr. Lepore and his contributions, and your flyer says that you serve refreshments. I just note that the Santa Claus in this picture looks extra plump, so your refreshments must be, must be pretty good.
You're welcome to come, Mike, and test them out yourself.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the board?
No. Staff Sergeant just like to thank you for your service, and thank you for your work with this Toys for Tots program.
Sure. Just doing my part.
So?
I just want to echo what Lou said, and, and what Toys for Tots does, the brand is, is recognized out there as an example of people helping people. And I just, I, I think that's what we all ought to be doing more of, instead of looking for freebies and handouts or the government to take care of us all. I really like that this is a neighbor helping a neighbor and reinforcing that message to the local community and onward and out. So thank you, Frank, for, for taking the leadership here, and thank you, sir, for your, for your service as well.
Well, basically, Mike, it's a lot, I appreciate the kind comments, but, you know, you know, as we've said many years, is that we put out a bunch of empty boxes, and somehow, when we pick them up, they're a lot heavier. So, you know, it's, it's the gratitude and generosity of the people that actually donate that we appreciate, and certainly it makes our job tougher because we've got to lift heavier boxes, but certainly it makes it well worthwhile, especially, you know, Christmas morning, when we, when we all get up and say, gee, you know, we, hopefully we, we made it a little bit nicer for some families. And, but like I say, you know, if there's any, if anyone knows of any, any local families or something like that, you know, we're more than willing to reach out and make sure that everyone has as good a holiday as possible. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is scheduled for 7:45, and it's with Joseph M. Gleason of Verizon New England, Inc., regarding requests of Verizon New England, Inc. and Redding Municipal Light Department to remove five poles and place three poles on Lowell Street. And this item was tabled from November 9th. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for the record. My name is Joseph Gleason. I'm a right-of-way agent with Verizon New England, Inc., officer located 28, Diana Lane in Drakett. First and foremost, just a housekeeping measure, I apologize if it was a table matter because nobody was here. I was telling the recording secretary when he called me about this that we're very sensitive to these things, and I think that part of the confusion may have been that this was, this particular petition matter is not a, a matter that mandates public hearing. It's part of the, it's part of our state work permit to work within the confines of Route 129. So I think that may have been the, the excuse on Verizon's part for not showing, but we always like to have some representative here in some capacity whenever a Verizon matters here. So I apologize for not being here on the, on the 9th. As I said, Mr. Chairman, this, this particular petition is a little bit different than what I'm normally here to present. This petition is part and parcel of the ongoing work on Route 129, the road expansion here in Wilmington. And the petition before you this evening is finishing up the work that Verizon and Redding Municipal Light, and Mass Highway for that matter, have been engaged in relative to the existing utilities attendant to the Lowell Street Bridge. These pole moves that we're requesting are the, some of these, it's actually trying to bring the pole locations back to where they originally were. What happened was, when the work started on Route 129, Verizon and RMLD were required to relocate some of the utilities from the north side to the south side of the street in order to effectuate the, the bridge work that was ongoing through Mass Highway. So what you're seeing right here now is sort of a return to the past, what it was before the work began. The poles, the four poles on the south side of Lowell Street, two of those are servicing poles, two of those are stub poles. All four of those poles are to be removed. And what we're going to be doing is, we're going to be placing three new poles on the north side at the location shown on the plan. Those are Poles 2264, 2263, and then 2262 on the opposite side of the bridge. We're also going to be removing old Pole 2264, which, again, is shown on the plan as being 30 feet in a westerly direction from Poles 22, the new location, Pole 2264. As I said, this pretty much brings to some, brings closure to the work that we're doing at that location relative to the poles. Again, my presence here tonight is morally, merely informational, because some of this work has already been done under the state permit, and I'm just here sort of to field any questions and to get any feel if there are any issues ongoing relative to this work that we're doing.
Before we go to the audience, any questions or comments from the board about the proposed work as it's been outlined? There's nothing that jumps out at me from the plan, so I think that the information you provided has been sufficient. Any questions or comments from the audience? Yes?
Quick one. Will there be any disturbance to the existing sidewalks?
No.
So the slot's already pre-made?
Yeah. As a matter of fact, the, the, the new poles are already in, actually. They've already placed them at where they're going.
Switching the service.
That's correct, and we're going to, and the, we're really here merely to talk about the removal of the, the older poles there. And as, again, Mr. Chairman, Verizon would never do any work in the town of Wilmington absent the authority of this board, save, before we obtain the authority of this board, save for that work that we do under state permits. And more often than not, we would come before you before we would do any work under a state permit, even though we're not required to. We would still come before the board, make sure that everything is satisfactory with the town before we commence. Because of this, this has been an ongoing project for a long time, and I think there's a lot of pressure to get this work completed, so that's part of the reason why we're seeing the poles already in.
Yeah, and I think that you wouldn't get any objection from anybody around here to keep... to keep moving forward as long as it was in accordance with the plans and the permit that you have from the state, so. Okay, any other questions or comments?
I, I just have a question, Joe, because I understand what you're saying, that you don't need permission, yet the submission asks for permission.
Right.
I mean, the submission that you're asking the Board of Selectment to sign indicates that there was a hearing and written notice and et cetera, just like a normal petition, and you're asking the Board to sign that, and I'm frankly reluctant to suggest that the Board sign this now that indicates something else took place.
Yeah, I, I suspect, Mr. Chad, that what you're probably seeing there is, um, how should I show this diplomatically? You know, um, when it comes to these sort of things, a lot of the practices and procedures of Verizon tend to be a bit rote. You know, we have clerks who handle a lot of this work, and, um, I don't think that some of the times these clerks are sensitive to the legal ends of these matters. So if you have a petition there or a, a license or a grant of location that is seeking the, um, uh, signature of this board, um, from a legal standpoint, my recommendation is I don't think there's any requirement that the Board sign that. I'm, I'm not aware of any requirement. Again, the work is being done under the state permit, so I don't believe that, um, we need the grant of location from the town for those pole locations. And I, and I would agree with you in that regard. Why would the town sign off on a plan or a petition request for a grant of location when the work has already been done?
Well, more, more importantly, I mean, I think, as, as the Chairman has said in others, the work, obviously, when you're taking out five and putting in three, that's a good thing. I mean, no one's going to object to that, and it makes sense what you're doing. Nobody's suggesting that. But I'm just looking at, you, on this document, it says, remove five poles, place three poles, Lowell Street, Route one twenty-nine, and then hereby certify that the foregoing order was adopted at a meeting of the Board of Selectmen, Town of Wilmington.
Yeah, I, I would rec, I would suggest to you, don't sign it. But for the reasons you just stated.
Okay, I, I think you need to get, you need to get us something in writing.
Yes, I will, I will do that. This is, this is, to be honest with you, it's, I'm surprised this has never come up before. But again, a lot of times the work that, that I'm doing or I'm representing is work that hasn't been completed at the time I get there, even if it's under a state permit. So this is one of those rare instances where even though we don't need approval, we went ahead and did the work before, we're before this body. So, um, I will be happy to secure something from Verizon indicating that, that there's no requirement from the Board to sign off on these grants of location.
All right, because we, we did know there was no requirement for a hearing.
Right.
But I, I looked at that, uh, still you'd kind of, I, I think you bifurcate that. You know, the fact that there's no hearing required doesn't necessarily mean that the Board should not be providing permission. So we really need to get something from you.
Okay. I, I, I'm, I'm sensitive to the, to the legal issue you brought up, and I will, I will address that with the, the right-of-way department and with our legal department, if necessary, and get any, um, look at a ruling on, on the requirements for that.
Mr. Chairman, the Board may want to consider a, a motion of, of not objecting or something, just throw that out. I'm not sure you could.
Yeah, I mean, I, we'll put it, what, coming in this, this evening, um, with the mindset that the attachments to your request really constituted a clerical, uh, clerical mistake, uh, you know, belt and suspenders, something that was unnecessary.
Correct, yeah.
Having in mind that's what, what this was, um, coming in here tonight, what action did you expect, if any, from the Board?
None. Normally what happens is, um, e- even though, um, no vote is actually required of the body, many communities will simply vote in favor of, of whatever petition is placed before them, merely as a, a show of acquiescence to the work. But again, I'm, I'm sensitive to town managers' concerns, um, because like I said, more often than not, I'm not before the body after the fact. I'm usually before the body before the fact. So in that respect, um, all I was looking for tonight was just maybe an acquiescence or a vote of approval of this, not looking for an actual signed grant of location. But, um, and again, I, as I said, I think those, the, the, the license, the blank license that they send you is done more out of rote than anything else.
My, my concern is not so much a vote. I, I certainly, it's up to the Board, Mr. Chairman, but I, I certainly wouldn't object to a vote of approval. I, I just don't want to recommend, as I would normally do to the Board, to sign this document, because this document suggests that there was a, a public hearing and that notices were mailed out and everything else, and that clearly didn't happen because it didn't need to happen.
Right.
And that's, uh...
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you there. I think what makes sense is for the Board to, um, entertain a motion to, uh, notify Verizon New England, uh, in writing that it has no objection to the, um, proposed removal of the poles and to the installation of the four or five that... How many new ones went in?
Three, three new, five to be removed.
The installation of the three and the removal of the five. Uh, that will serve to memorialize what the Board's position was tonight without taking any legal action and implying that we thought we had authority where we didn't. So that probably makes sense.
And I will...
Put it in writing and send it to Verizon, and then would also, uh, ask for some feedback, uh, just to confirm that...
I'll get, I'll get that from Verizon and have that sent to Town Manager's office.
Okay. Um, so it, first of all, are there any objections to the, uh, installation that's occurred and the removal that's proposed? Any objections here on that? Then, uh...
Uh, I have no objection. I have a question. If I did have an objection, which I don't, would it matter? In other words, we're taking a vote here to say we approve, but even if we didn't approve, polls were already in. I'm not sure what we're voting on.
On the installation, it wouldn't, but I think on the removal, it would. I, I'm hard-pressed to think of an example of why I would be opposed to the removal, but to answer your question, I, I think it would. If, if we said to you tonight, we don't want you to remove those poles, you wouldn't, right? You would figure it out.
No, I, I, I think that from a legal standpoint, and I, and I try not to be coming off sounding cavaliers, if we don't require the Board's permission for this because we have a state permit. Verizon doesn't take that position. Verizon takes the position that even though we have the state mandate, we like to come before the body and get your approval. If there were objection, if there was just one objection, if, if you took this vote tonight and there was one objection, and the, the grounds for that objection memorialized or made part of the record, I would take those back to Verizon. I'd say, we have a selectman in Wilmington who's concerned about this. We need to address that. So legally, we're not required, but from a business standpoint, from a community partnership standpoint, we'd always be very sensitive to something like that.
Okay. Uh, do we have a motion then to, uh, notify Verizon New England, uh, and Redding Light Department that we have no objection to the installation and proposed removal?
I would make such a motion worded exactly that way.
I'll second.
Made and seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And I will get that to you as soon as possible.
Our next scheduled appointment is with Peter Stone, Fordham Associates, Inc., of the Aleppo Temple. It's regarding request to change the manager from Harvey Wa, Waugh to Peter Stone. Did I have Mr.?
Waugh.
Waugh's name?
Waugh.
Waugh, okay, Mr. Waugh. Sorry about that. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen. I am Peter K. Stone. As you said, I'm the Secretary Clerk of Fordham Associates Incorporated, doing business as Aleppo Temple. And I request the change of management from Harvey J. Waugh to myself, and, uh, I have been three years assuming Harvey's jobs at Aleppo Shrinas, and this is the final step. This will allow his final, his full retirement. And that is the purpose of the request.
Do we have any, uh...
Town has no objections, Mr. Chairman.
Questions or comments from the Board?
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
I think...
We have a, uh, a motion relative to the request.
Make a motion that we grant the request onto the, the appointment, uh, this evening.
Second. Made and seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, just a note, I, I know this all seems very pro forma, but in order to satisfy the A B C C, you have to be here, and I'm sure you're aware of that, so...
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Our next regularly scheduled agenda item is with William Liston, four nine eight two Building Association, Inc., Knights of Columbus, and it's regarding request to change the manager from Robert Woods to William Liston. Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, this is a similar request as the one that, uh, the Board just entertained. Mr. Liston, I assume that, um, the application is complete, speaks for itself. Is it, is that the case? Good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking to Mr. Liston, and I apologize.
I think he looked to you to make sure that everything's...
For that, okay, to make sure I knew you were talking to me. Um, yes, the application is in order, and the town has no objection. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Questions or comments from the Board? Do we have a motion?
I move that we, uh, accept and, uh, do we appoint? What's the term?
Grant the request.
Grant the request, uh, to, uh, for Bill Liston as the new manager of four nine eight two Building Association, doing business with the Knights of Columbus.
I'll second.
Made and seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, next agenda item is with Richard Malorty, President of Cannon Foods, Inc., the Sandwich Exchange Express, and it's regarding a request to obtain common victual license for property located at sixty-six Z Conken Street. Uh, good evening, sir.
Uh, yes, this, uh, operation is, uh, my second one in town. My first operation is, uh, on our thirteenth year, which we have all the necessary permits. And we're just into our third month of the new restaurant, and we've had all permits approved and whatnot. And it's just come to our attention that the common victuals was lacking, and, um, we filled out the appropriate forms and application fee, and at this point, everything should be in order.
We, we need the certificate of insurance and floor plan, right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have, uh, reviewed the application through the Inspector of Buildings who, uh, has no outstanding zoning issues at this location, um, and also, uh, the Director of the Board of Health, who has no issues with compliance of the food code, uh, with this establishment. Uh, the Inspector of Buildings has, has all of this information that I just requested, but we needed it the, it as well for the, uh, common victuals license file.
Gotcha, okay.
So no objections to the issuance of the, of the license. And again, um, Mr. Mal, as I explained to Mr. Malorty, it, it seems very pro forma, but the fact is that this is a requirement in order to reach to get the initial common victuals license to come be, to come before the Board. We are, we are saying that, and if the Board, you know, if the Board so chooses, uh, we could, as I explained to Mr. Malorty, um, who I believe should have well known, uh, that this was available. The Health Director had, has told me that he was advised when she went down to make the inspection that the, of the requirement of the common victuals license, as Mr. Malorty has indicated, um, for whatever reason, he decided not to do that. Um, and I, if, if the Board says no, then I will take steps to, uh, have the seating removed, um, tomorrow morning, but that's the Board's decision.
I, I apologize for maybe not following through on the, uh, common victuals. As they say, on an annual, annual basis, I receive it from the town for my current restaurant. I send in the fee and the appropriate paperwork, and it gets done. I guess originally, almost thirteen years ago, when I opened the first restaurant, I sat here in regards to the common victuals. Truthfully, I just had never even thought of it. I just thought it would be something that would come in the mail. I'd just sign off, send in the fee. Uh, anything, uh, you know, regarding this project, everything has been done appropriately, and, uh, it's just, uh, I just didn't realize that I should have to physically do that, and I apologize for that.
Questions or comments from the Board? I guess, uh, I guess my comment would be that, um, if, if the applicable, if the other applicable licenses and permits have been issued, um, and that, uh, the department heads who, uh, have issued those permits don't have any objection to the issuance of the victual license, uh, that I'm inclined to grant the license and, and give a businessperson a mulligan on, uh, on what I'll just assume to be an oversight. But I wouldn't want the wrong message to be sent to the applicant either. It's, uh, you know, it's not something that, uh, that we take lightly, and it's something that, uh, we have a responsibility to, uh, ensure the residents that would take care of business. Again, I guess I...
I can certainly assure you, Mr. Chairman, that it wasn't oversight. Um, I, I do remember Shelley Newhouse coming to the place and saying, you know, I'll need the common victulars permit and, you know, just getting open and whatnot. I had all the other permits in place. I just didn't even think of it until it was brought by my attention. Al Spalding called me on Friday, and I said, absolutely, jeez, I'd be down there on Monday. I came down here today, as I said I would. I filled out the permit, gave her the fee, and again, I apologize, it was nothing intentional in any way, shape, or form. I've been in this town for thirteen years, and, um, I don't think I've had any problems with any permitting or anything. And again, I just totally apologize that I didn't realize I had to physically, you know, bring, uh, do as, you know, as we were supposed to do here. I just thought it would be something that would come in the mail. I sign off, send it back with the fee, and, you know, that's what I do. Uh, I didn't realize that because it was a new restaurant that I had to actually do it, as I'm doing today, so I apologize. It was a mistake on my part.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the Board? Uh, do we have, uh, questions or comments from the audience? Do we have a motion?
I make the motion we, uh, grant a common particular license for property located at sixty-six Z Conken Street.
I'll second it.
Made and seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you. Sorry for any misunderstandings. It's my fault. Thank you.
So, good luck. At that, I think we can move to communication.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, as you are aware, the, uh, Olin and others have agreed with the, uh, United States EPA to implement a remedial investigation feasibility study to supplement data obtained during the previous work with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection for the Olin property located at fifty-one Eames Street. Uh, this was a subject matter of our meeting with Olin officials, um, last month. To obtain the needed additional data, sampling activities on certain town properties, uh, need to be undertaken. As a result, we have been working with Olin on an acceptable access agreement and license that would facilitate Olin's collection of additional data on property owned by the town in connection with the implementation of the investigation, uh, study. Uh, over the past two months, Town Council and GeoInsight, working with myself and staff, have been working with Olin staff and attorneys to craft an agreement acceptable to the town. I am requesting, uh, the authorization from the Board of Selectmen to sign any final agreement on behalf of the town once said agreement is approved by the Town Council's office.
And I, I know that we discussed this, uh, last week, Mike, when you, um, indicated that you wanted to put that on the agenda. Did you want us to take a, a formal action tonight, or were you just making sure that we're in the loop?
Well, I, I think if you take the action, it, it's sort of belt and suspenders. As we discussed, I think I already have the authority under the Charter, um, to enable somebody to do a test or dig a test hole. Uh, but the Town Council's office, um, agrees with that, but are, at the same time, indicates that it might make sense for the Board of Selectmen to also, or give it its imprimatur. And nothing would, uh, nothing would go out to Olin unless, of course, we had the Town Council's review. And this has also been re, reviewed by GeoInsight. And essentially, it is allowing them to do exactly what they said they wanted to do, and that EPA is requiring that they do, and that is to do some sampling. That's what came out of those, the last meeting that they held with you and also at the middle school. So I would, I would request that the Board has no objections to, for a motion to authorize the Town Manager to, to sign any, um, licensing agreement in connection with the, uh, Olin sampling, um, authorize the Town Manager to do so.
Then, subject to Town Council, what you're going to do anyways.
Subject to Town Council, right.
And do we have any questions, comments, or a motion on that?
A question on that would be, I have no objection, obviously, to, uh, the Town Manager having that authority. Would, after your... Would, after your signature, were put to such an agreement, would we still be made aware of the, the agreement in our typical communications?
Sure, yeah. But one, one of the, one of the issues here is, is that they were hoping to be able to do it by December 6th. Frankly, there's been no final agreement. The board meets on the, on the 14th. I'm certainly satisfied that GeoInsight has looked at this, and that, you know, the town is technically covered, and legally, Town Council is looking at this. But, but we don't have a final agreement on, you know, all the, all the, the finite nuances, right?
Anything else? Do we have a motion then?
I'll make the motion to authorize the town manager to sign the agreement, pending the Town Council's look at.
I'll second.
Made and seconded, anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Okay. The board has a letter that has been addressed to them from Mark Ward, the group manager of the operations support for the United States Department of Transportation and the Federal Aviation Administration, relative to the Boston Logan Airport noise study. As you know, some time ago, I think it was back in 2008, as the letter indicates, in February of 2008, the Federal Aviation Administration sent a letter to the selectmen, along with letters to a number of different communities, to inform them about the Boston Logan Airport noise study. We're on the, kind of the outer edge, as you can see, of that study, and we really don't feel a tremendous effect from the noise at Logan Airport, but this, they're required to send this out, and they're doing as much work as possible that I'm sure will assist the folks who live nearby in Winthrop and East Boston and those areas. But Wilmington is a part of that study, and it's just a notification. We have a, a notice, I'm not sure how else to characterize this, but it was addressed to the Board of Selectmen, and it's, and it's legitimate communication from another community, in this case, Kingston, Massachusetts, promoting a positive change in the financial management of local government, as well as statewide economics. And what they have here is sort of a help-wanted poster, looking for local municipality, looking for courageous state rep senators and governor. And they cite what the applicant should know, and what the education experience should be, and et cetera, et cetera. It's maybe a little tongue-in-cheek, I'm not sure how you would describe it, but nevertheless, it's an official communique from another community, and it's always been the policy of the, of the town. When another community writes that, we listen. I don't know if we've always responded, but we certainly listened. Suspect that we're just going to file that, or...
Unless I hear a motion of the contrary.
It's been provided to the press, so I'm sure they'll have fun with that. Asking the board to consider approving the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Wilmington and the Wilmington Police Benevolent Association Local 13, the Police Supervisors Union. As the board is aware from our discussions on this in executive session, a contractual agreement was reached at the table and ratified by the union. It's now up to the Board of Selectmen to vote yea or nay. It is a two-year contract that would be effective for fiscal years 2010 and 2011, specifically July 1 of 2009 through June 30 of 2011. Calls for a 0% increase in the first year and a 2.5% increase in the second year. So, it's a 0, 2.5 over a two-year period. And that is, there's nothing else of substance changed in the, in the contract. That's, that's essentially the contract, two years, 0, 2.5.
You know, the board has met an executive session at a previous meeting to present any questions or comments. Notwithstanding that, if we have any questions, comments, or a motion, then let's hear them.
I'd like to make a motion that the Wilmington Board, the Town of Wilmington, specifically Wilmington Board of Selectmen entered an agreement with the, let's see, what did I say? Collective bargaining, Wilmington Police Supervisors Union, NEPA Local 13. Second.
We have a motion to approve the bargaining agreement that's been presented, and that's been seconded. Any additional comment or questions? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, just to make a quick comment.
Certainly.
I just want to thank the Police Supervisors Union for being a realist, taking a look at, you know, the negotiation that we did on behalf of the Town of Wilmington. And I said it earlier, and I just hope the message is out there, that all the unions take a really hard look on what's happening in municipalities, and we really need to work together. And that's all I'm going to say, and I hope that we can do that. Thank you.
All set, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to memorialize, I guess, in a, in a motion, asking the board to consider accepting the gift of funds from the Wilmington Sons of Italy in accordance with Mass General law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and the amount of $15,000 for the reconstruction of the gazebo at the Town Common.
Do we have any questions, comments, or a motion?
Sure, I'll move that we, we accept the gift of funds. This is an easy one. We accept the gift of funds from the Wilmington Sons of Italy.
Second. Made and seconded, anything wasn't said earlier? All in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, one other item, if you, I might, prior to you going to public comments, we have a note, a memorandum from Sharon George, town clerk, asking if the board would consider appointing an additional election worker. I know you've appointed them just recently, but there is an additional election worker she would like to have made available for the December 8th election, and that is Rosemary Russo. Request that you consider approving that appointment, Wilmington residents.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion that we approve the additional member.
Have the motion to approve the additional election worker. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Made and seconded, anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
That concludes the regular business before the board, Mr. Chairman.
Public comments? Questions, comments from the audience? Seeing none. New business, committee reports. And then, why don't we start down here? Is anything new?
No, I just want to wish my colleagues and everybody out there a Happy Thanksgiving, and once again, go Wildcats.
Thank you.
I agree.
Anything now here?
Indeed, go Cats.
Important dates, I'm going to remember in this meeting. Important dates, please, Mike.
You know, you know there's a school committee member here from Tewksbury who was ready to challenge anybody to a, to a bet, I think, for the football.
A little too late, you should have said something earlier. It's unfortunate that somebody from Wilmington had to remind you of that, but that's okay.
Important dates. Right now, we are continuing to collect yard waste curbside, Mr. Chairman, just to remind folks how they can put their yard waste out at curbside on their regular trash day between now and December 4th. November 25th and November 28th are our next brush drop-off days at Old Main Street, at the Recycling Center. On the 25th, it's 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and on the 28th, it's 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And as the selectmen have just noted, Thanksgiving is the 26th, and town offices, obviously, are closed. We are open a full day on that Friday. I know there are some communities that, that don't open, but we're open regular hours on, both on Wednesday and Friday, before and after Thanksgiving. There is a registration deadline coming up for junior basketball. It's November 30th. Junior basketball run through the Recreation Department is for grades one and two. Again, the following week, we have additional times for the brush drop-offs, December 2nd and December 5th. We also have them on December 9th and December 12th. Those are Wednesdays, Saturdays, Wednesdays 8:00 AM to 2:00, Saturdays 9:00 AM to 4:00. So, for the next three consecutive Saturdays, we have a brush drop-off program at the Recycling Center. Inviting youngsters and ulsters alike to attend Santa's workshop run by the Recreation Department, which will be December 3rd, which is a Thursday, at the Town Hall, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It's a wonderful event, and we encourage parents to take advantage of that and bring their youngsters. The annual tree lighting ceremonies are December 5th. They begin at the Town Common, the activities begin at 4:00 PM. The actual visit by Santa and the tree lighting will be at 6:00. There is a holiday social at the Harndon Tavern, sponsored by the Historical Commission, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM on that Sunday, December 6th, the day after the tree lighting ceremonies. And again, we remind everyone that the special state primary election to elect a, to select primary candidates for the, or to elect, select candidates for the final election will be held on December 8th. The polls open at 7:00 AM, they close at 8:00 PM, regular polling locations, Town Hall, Butwell School, and the Wildwood School. That's December 8th, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM for the special state primary election, and the board's next meeting is on December 14th.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? I'll move.
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor? Unanimous?